It's nine o'clock, so we'll call this special meeting of the Commissioners' Court to order. February the 27th, nine o'clock here at the courthouse. Today, we've got Brother Tommy Earl Burton with us here to lead us with our prayer. And he's at St. Andrews Methodist Church now. And we're glad to have Brother Tommy here. We'll all rise and have our prayer.
First off, I want to say it's an honor to be here. And I was a little leery when the preacher's invited to the courthouse. You know, it's one of those like you show up and you win a TV trick. I thought maybe y'all were cleaning up some old records or something on me. I don't know if God will not. And so I would ask this morning that you would pray with me as we think about our families and our church family, our Commissioners' Court, the judge, the Sheriff's Department, our fire departments, all our first responders, and the citizens of Titus County, that we would have them on our mind as we pray.
Absolutely.
Our Father, join me, who art in heaven. Hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come; thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. And lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil; for thine is the kingdom, and the power, and the glory forever. Amen. Thank you all. Thank God for you. Have a good day.
Thank you, Tom.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which is safe, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Tom. Do we have any public comments that would like to be spoken today? Okay, we'll move on to that. Considering possibly approve the minutes from the February 13th, 2023 regular meeting of Commissioners' Court.
I make the motion to approve the minutes.
We've got Jody Mitchell making the motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Parchman. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Here's your notice. Consider possibly change the deadline for approving the posting of the agenda for Commissioners' Court to the public from Thursday at 9:00 a.m. to Friday at 9:00 a.m. And this was on the Commissioners' Court back in March of 2015. By law, it only has to be 72 hours. And the reason that we're considering this today is it gives us a little more time if we do have something that we need to put on the agenda. It gives us that extra timeframe there. We're not trying to hide any minutes or run anything by anybody. It just gives us a little more time to get prepared for that. They did that in a special court meeting in 2015. Actually, the law does say just the 72 hours, which would be on Friday. And I think that gives us ample time as citizens to get that posted. And it also gives anyone that needs anything on the agenda a little bit of extra time. It seems like we've always got someone calling Thursday evening needing something on there. So maybe this will help us with that and not making it go to the next meeting. So any discussion on that by any Commissioners, sir?
I make a motion to approve.
We've got a motion by Commissioner Parchman to approve that.
Seconded motion.
Got a second by Commissioner Mitchell. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Number four on here, consider possibly approve request to place restrictions and placement on the public sanitation facilities on courthouse grounds as related to the veterans' memorials. Steve Austin came and spoke with us on this our last meeting. Since then, I've talked with the city council. And I think it was just a miscommunication on their part. I think once we talked with them and with our Commissioners, we're all in agreements. We don't want any portages by the memorials or anything like that. It was just a lack of communication. But with this in place, then we sure wouldn't have to have that problem anymore. We could get them moved if they do put them there. But I do believe with after talking to council members and stuff, that they won't be placed there. But I still think this could be a good motion to put into place so that it doesn't happen again. And what some of you don't know, if you're not because the memorial's now front here for those that have died in service here from Titus County. And our servicemen are very, very important to me. And after talking to the city, they're very important with them, and our Commissioners feel the same way. And so we just wanted to make sure that that doesn't happen again. So any discussion on that?
I make the motion to approve the request.
We've got a motion by Commissioner Mitchell to approve that with not placing that there.
Seconded.
Seconded by Daniel Applewhite. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Number five, consider possibly approve the payments for the right-of-way private owners related to the former Rocket Road 1735 project. We've got this.
Morning, carry on today.
Good.
I want to apologize again to the fact that Gary couldn't make it because I know he's younger and better looking than I am. But I'll try to make this brief. I do have some good news for you. This is the last parcel of right-of-way on 1735. It got held up by some paperwork with the bank, released and topped up, releasing part of the lien. But bottom line is, I need a check for $11,068.71. That's $9,828 for the property itself and the remainder is closed. We have a copy of that here if anybody would like to see this stuff. Anybody have any questions of me?
So this is the last one? They can start construction now?
Well, we're still clearing utilities.
Right.
The job has gone to lay. It's under contract. It is scheduled to go to work actually the first June. By then, we should have the remainder of the utilities cleared. There are five of them out there working right now. And so if you drive down the road, you'll see that because they're back.
That's the second time he's real bad. So we're going to start deducting that from your pay.
If you drive down the road, you'll see because they're back.
Will you get that a little closer to you? I don't know if it's.
I'm sorry. You can see the crews that are out there. So they should be cleared. Everybody but Tri-Sud will probably be done by the end of next month. Tri-Sud had a pretty good move to make, so it's going to take them a little bit of time. Does anybody have any other questions of me?
I'm making a motion to approve.
May I have one? Do you have the paperwork for me for that? Okay, you're going to leave it with me? Okay. And then this is, I think, yeah, okay.
Everybody good? We've got a motion by Commissioner Applewhite to approve that page.
Seconded.
Seconded by Commissioner Parker. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Number six, consider possibly approve the request for a donation to the Talco Historical Museum for renovation to the museum located in the Talco City Hall building. I believe Ms. Mears is here to speak with us today.
I'd like to knock this down. I'm glad he did it first. I just wanted to reiterate that we appreciate the consideration, that you're even putting this on the agenda. And I've got two ladies here with me today that works in the museum with us. And I think I've already presented this once, so I'm not going to go over it again. But if y'all have any questions or anything you'd like to ask about it, I'd be glad to try to answer them.
This construction company that you've got these bids from, do you, are they, you know these people or? Okay.
They have done work for me personally. They've done work around for the city and in the community, and they were born and raised there as well. So they're, and he's, they have come and visited the museum before we even considered it. So they are young men that are very interested in keeping our community rolling as much as possible.
Any Commissioners have any questions for Ms. Mears?
Can you say the donation or, I mean, the price allowed to leave everybody familiar with what she's asking for?
Yes, the price, I believe, is 22,300. Is that correct, Ms. Mears?
Right. They were trying to weatherproof the windows and the doors. The building itself was constructed in 1937 when the city was incorporated. And some of the doors and windows are the original doors and windows. And we only have one entrance into the museum. And so we're wanting to make sure we open up one of those doors that's just been bordered up because of the wind and the rain coming in those entrances. And they brought it through the years, and so there's not been anything done in those windows since 1937. And so that's our whole goal, is to try to preserve the building as much as possible so that the articles that we are preserving in the museum are protected. I mean, I found, one day when I was there working and cleaning, I found the blueprints for the whole city hall was sitting next to a window that had wind and rain coming in. And I was able to save that and get it out there. But, you know, those kind of things are very, you know, pertinent to the history of this county. And so that's our main goal, is to preserve those openings and to make sure that things can be protected. The labor you can see on these bids are pretty minimal. It's mostly the materials that's going to take to reinforce those windows in that building. And I was surprised when I walked around the building how well it maintained its foundation because y'all, I know y'all know what the ground is like in Talco. It shifts and goes in all directions, and there's crevices in people's yards.
Cracks and, no, folly and absolutely.
We've done that in the cemetery. So it's, you know, it really has withstands the times, as far as those windows and doors and entrances. And then we saw really like the painters and that. And the area where we have the museum was changed over into a living quarters. And we don't need that particular space taking, space that would have displayed things than we do here. So we wanted to remove like the sinks and stuff like that, the bathroom and those kinds of things so that we could make it more conducive to people coming in.
Ms. Mears, have you got anyone else that contributes into this cause or just?
Well, the city does, but they pay the, I mean, they don't charge us anything to use those rooms or fire rooms we're using currently. And they pay all the utilities. And then we do just have a kitty box there that when we have people come. And then they did in the beginning when they started the museum, they had a $10 membership fee. But with kind of all of those people that were involved in that process of the beginning in 2000, we have one lady that's 90 years old, Grace Hammond, that's still in the area. And then Patsey, she wasn't involved in the beginning of it, but Patsey's telling me her family still has, and they are very good to donate to the hospital. And we do, we've not done fundraisers to the museum, but we may start doing that again. The fire department, you know, has fundraisers. We have the cemetery and have done that. So we know people get kind of strung out on trying to get donations in the small communities, but we don't have any business at the same time.
Right.
We, that's been kind of what it means at this point. And then there are the kitty boxes where people come and visit, they do make a donation, they can, it's come along with ways and means at this point.
Any other questions? Thank you, Ms. Mears.
Thank you all.
Do we have a motion on this or any thoughts from the Commissioners?
I think it's a good thing. There are not many historical buildings left in Titus County anymore. And I think it's a good idea to preserve this building. So, I mean, I'll make the motion to donate the money to them.
Okay. Got a motion made by Commissioner Parchman to donate 22,300, 22,300, I'm sorry. I'm going to get that straight to the Talco Historical Museum for renovations.
Seconded.
Got a second by Commissioner Applewhite. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Consider that.
Judge, we're going to take that out of the, what was the ARPA fund?
Yes, that's not the ARPA fund anymore, but yes.
Yeah, it's not.
Right. But basically, for those that have been here and hadn't been here, we've switched some of that kind of stuff over. But it's not going to come out of new revenue, but the yes out of that that we've already got. So appreciate y'all coming, Ms. Mears. Number seven, consider possibly approve the use of purchasing corporatives and authorize any other purchasing corporatives that may become available to Titus County. Barbara, you got any comment?
Sorry, but I don't think it's working.
Of course it is. We wouldn't shut you off.
Well, and he wanted. Five minutes ago, it didn't work. Wasn't my turn, I guess. Yes, sir. You have a report there in front of you from May 22 that has the list of the purchasing corporatives. We currently are a member of, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, no, 10. 10 different purchasing corporatives. The thing about these purchasing corporatives is that they have met the requirements for purchasing, for the legal requirements for purchasing. So if you plan to purchase a piece of equipment, now this is only new equipment. You plan to purchase a piece of equipment, the way that works is you get the quote from that vendor. They will tell you if they're a member of, we'll use the first one here, BuyBoard. And if so, it will also have the code, their contract number. So when you bring that to me, I verify that the county is in good standing, and we are in good standing with all of these listed here. Then I also contact BuyBoard to verify that the price that they've given you is the BuyBoard price. For example, if you go to buy something and you don't ask for BuyBoard, you're going to pay more. So I verify that. And once that is verified, we are prepared to move forward. We don't have to advertise in the newspaper. We don't have to wait, you know, 14 days after. It saves us a significant amount of time on new equipment. Used equipment, you shall have a process to go through. And the next two items, I believe it's the next two, the backhoe loaders that we are requested to purchase for Precinct One and Precinct Two are purchased through Sourcewell, one of these items on here. So my suggestion is that you approve this and authorize us to join any others that we become aware of. Or if you find a vendor that's a member of something that we are not, then we will join that. That may take Commissioners' Court approval, but we need to be sure that we accept this opportunity to get that equipment to y'all as quickly as we can.
As quickly as can, and that kind of guarantees us the bottom price on that, is that not right?
It does. They've done the purchasing. They actually go out for bids and the various companies turn those in. That's why we need that contract number for me to verify that we are indeed getting the right price.
Perfect.
I make a motion to approve the purchasing corporatives.
Got a motion by Commissioner Mitchell to approve the motion.
Seconded.
Seconded by Commissioner Parchman. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Number eight, consider possibly approve the purchase of road materials using general fund, prior funding with bids approved in August of 2022 of up to $130,000 for Precinct One. That's you.
Yes, sir. I'll make a motion where you approve this.
I second it.
Got a motion by Commissioner Parchman and a second by Commissioner Mitchell. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Judge, may I say something right here? No?
Yes.
Okay. I had sent y'all some information, Mr. Parchman, of the $500,000 from the former ARPA funds. There was an item on there for a new dump truck of $100,000. If he had continued to plan to purchase that, there would not have been sufficient funds. But he contacted me yesterday and let me know that he's not going to purchase that dump truck. So that will leave sufficient funding for him to spend up to $130,000 for road materials.
Thank you.
Just want to make sure that we're, because that's a little different from what was discussed when we had our meeting with February the 7th with Mark Taylor. Just clarification.
All those in favor of that, we've already approved it also. Okay. So all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? All right. Number nine, consider possibly approve the purchase of a new backhoe through Sourcewell Purchasing Corporation from Doggett Equipment and a John Deere for $141,901.37 for Precinct Two. And these are on that list that Barbara was just speaking of.
And I sent you that information for you to verify, but we have it in our office.
Yes, ma'am.
The discount on this one is 43%. That's significant.
Absolutely.
I make a motion for the backhoe for Precinct Two.
Got a motion from Jody Mitchell to approve that for Precinct Two's backhoe.
Seconded.
Seconded by Commissioner Parchman. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Number 10, consider possibly approve the purchase of a new backhoe through Sourcewell Purchasing Corporation from Doggett Equipment, John Deere, and it's the same exact price, $141,901.37 for Precinct One.
I make a motion to approve that.
We've got a motion from Commissioner Parchman to approve that.
I second it.
Seconded by Commissioner Mitchell. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? carries. Number 11, consider possibly approve the sale of grade all and tractor with loader through Auctioneer Express Online Auction for Precinct Two. Jody, that'll be yours, I'm assuming.
I make a motion to sell these pieces of equipment that's listed.
Hold on just a minute. Barbara, we got some?
Can I speak?
Yes, ma'am.
The first time I met with Mr. Mitchell, he was planning only to sell these two items. After that date we met, and there's some other things he likes, he would like to sell, and y'all have to approve all those. And I sent that to you, but I'd like to go ahead and read it into the minutes just to make sure that we're all on the same page. It's a C-Max mixer that was purchased in 1992, 8560 Ford tractor purchased in 1997, the grade all purchased in 2003, grade all bucket purchased in 2020, a cat roller purchased in 2020, and a Vermeer wood chopper purchased in 2023. There's also an item that he plans to sell in the future, a motor grater purchased in 1998. He's not planning to sell that at this time, but he would like your permission to go ahead and do that. He's going to wait until he gets his new piece of equipment and then sell this one at that time. He's been to my office, and we've matched up all the serial numbers and all those kinds of things so that when this is approved and as they are sold, we'll have the information to transfer them.
It does.
I'm going to make another motion to sell all that piece of equipment that was listed. Barbara, this listed instead of the two that's on the agenda.
Okay, except for the motor grater?
Except for it until I replace it.
I think he wants to approve it now.
Okay, well, it's all, all these will be approved then. So we've got the C-Max mixer, the Ford tractor, the grade all, the grade all bucket, caterpillar roller, the Vermeer wood chipper, and the motor grater. Is that correct?
That's correct. Plus, you've got the grade all on there?
Yes.
You said it all along.
Yes, it's all on here. Got a motion by Commissioner Mitchell to approve the sale of this equipment.
Seconded.
Got a second by Commissioner Applewhite. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Number 12, consider possibly approve the increase in the rate the county pays for an ad latum attorney fees. What this is, is when we have different hearings, they have to have an ad latum lawyer. Right now, that is $50. Sometimes when we have these ad latums, they have to go to the hospital with us for a hearing. Sometimes it's here for a hearing. And the reason that I've put this on there, we've only got two lawyers that'll even participate right now. So that kind of puts us in a bad situation as far as being able to get a lawyer and have a hearing and get the case moved forward. So I'm making a motion today to move that from $50 up to $100 for each case on that. And if you've got any questions, I'd be happy to answer any of them that I can.
Judge, is that effective today?
That will come in effect today.
Okay.
I make a motion to do it because, you know, it costs money for anybody to come up here. They will always be up here for one hour to two hours to three hours.
Got a motion made by Commissioner Mitchell to approve this.
Seconded.
Got a second by Commissioner Parchman. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Approve the oral and written reports from the county officials.
Make motion, we approve.
Got a motion by Commissioner Parker to approve those.
Seconded.
And a second by Commissioner Applewhite. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Number 14, consider possibly accept the treasurer's report as a matter of the record.
Make motion, we approve.
Got a motion by Commissioner Parker to approve that.
Seconded.
Seconded by Commissioner Mitchell. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Number 15, approve budget amendments.
I make, you got anything sale on that report?
Well, I'd like to go over them if that's.
Right. Yes, ma'am. I'm sorry.
I didn't want to overstep.
No, that's why I was saying.
The first one is number 20, is 2023-10. It's an increase of $2,395, the donation for the fire truck. Commissioners, you approve that increase. That comes out of general county contingency. There is one item that I want to bring to your attention. The budget amendment is for the entire 2395, but the invoice that I have indicates that they received a rebate of $500. So I paid them 2395 minus the $500, and I contacted Roy Killman and let him know if they did not get a rebate, or he has other information. We'll have the budget amendment ready to go to pay him that additional 500. But based on the information that I have, we are only, we've only paid him the 1895. So the budget amendment is.
Oh, they are still looking for that too. I'm still trying to.
Yeah.
Oh, we can pay them as owners, is what the invoice they gave you. And if that's what they gave you, then that's what.
Well, they gave me a copy of the check, and they gave me some other things, but that included interest, and I don't think that y'all approved any interest. You approved what they actually paid for the truck.
Yes, ma'am.
Because, well, so you, I just want to make sure you're aware of that one. So that's 2023-10. That'll be the shortest one we have today. The next one is 2023-11. It's the use of the American Rescue Plan funding. It's what y'all have already voted on the last meeting, and this is to set up that actual budget. So what I did with that is I removed the grant assistant and all those related costs, took off the office supplies, postage, and then we had a large line item just to hold a holding number for a budget of $6,104,18. And then I increased two new line items within the American Rescue Plan, the City and Mount Pleasant Fire Contract for $2.6 million, and the remaining funds to get to the original amount that we received, prior year sheriff's department salaries and benefits of $3,526,304. Any questions on that one? Okay. The next one's even longer. It's 2023-12. This is to set up the budget for the former ARPA funds. These funds will now go into General County Fund 101, I mean, 010, and we are going to house those in Department 410. So the items that are in here are the annex facade repairs of $250,000, the HVAC repairs or upgrades of $400,000, computers for remote $10,000, cybersecurity upgrades $37,000, shared items $582,000, maintenance shop tools $30,000, used crane truck $85,000, Sugar Hill Volunteer Fire Department repeater $10,000, and then capital outlay for each precinct of $500,000. Some of those are road materials and some of those are capital outlay. The road materials are in Precinct Four of $180,000 and Precinct One of $130,000. And then we also free up the money that we had originally planned to pay the city, the $1.3 million. That money goes back into general contingency. And we removed the line item that's in the current budget for fire protection for the city because we won't need that. And then we increased the contingency $1.3 million. This information is based on the reports that we have, these nice colored reports that Mark Taylor sent us at that time. Next year, we'll have an additional $1.3 million from the ARPA funds that will be going to the city. We do have an option to prepay that, according to Mr. Taylor, but that's not anything we've ever discussed. And so I'm staying with the plan that we originally had to pay that monthly as we go. If y'all want to change that, that's at your discretion, obviously.
Let us speak with them. If there's any type of discount for us paying that early, we may bring that before us. But if it's not, we'll keep our money and let them bring it to them monthly.
Yes. The last one is also short. If you'll recall, when Judge Cooper was very new, he had to go online and get us set up for local assistance and tribal consistency fund. It's additional monies that generally have the requirements of the ARPA. It's additional monies that generally have the requirements of the ARPA funds. It's $50,000 that we, we've already received the money, by the way. The money we received this year and then $50,000 next year. That's another $100,000 that y'all are gonna need to determine how you want to spend. But in order to get it into the books and records, I've set up a line item that just says revenue, local assistance and tribal consistencies fund, $50,000, and other compliant costs is just a line item because I don't know what those other compliant costs are gonna be at this time. And thank you, Judge, for doing that. I know it's a lot of work. I think there's facial recognition and a whole lot of personal information that he had to put in there and get transferred from Judge Lee, which made another step. And I think he and Monica did a great job on perseverance.
Well, let's give, let's give the credit where credit is due. They just had to have my picture and the rest of it Monica took care of. So I'm very grateful for her. She's doing a good job.
So those are the only ones I have today. It's just pretty long.
Okay. Get a motion to approve those budget amendments?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the budget amendments.
Got a motion by Commissioner Mitchell to approve those. Second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Parker. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Want to sign and pay our orders, approve our payments for the county.
Make a motion to pay our bills.
Get a motion to pay our bills from Commissioner Parker.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Applewhite. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Closing comments. Commissioner, Precinct 1, Parchman, you have anything?
Nothing on this end.
Commissioner Mitchell, Precinct 2?
No, I don't have any.
Commissioner Applewhite?
I'd just like to say we had a good school last week and learnt several things and were able, was able to get some information on some stuff that we've been looking for as far as equipment and whatnot. So that's all I'd like to say.
I think it was a very good meeting down there and did learn and got some good connections down there and found some different equipment. Dana went and looked at some stuff. So very, very proud of that and continue to go to those meetings there.